Good evening, everyone. I will call this regular city council meeting to order. Before we get started with the pledge of allegiance, I would like to make a brief statement. The city of Sebastian, myself, the state of Florida, the country, lost a real good friend and someone who cared deeply about this community. He was a Pearl Harbor survivor, and he lived here in the area, attended many of our veterans' meetings. His function at the meetings was not only to provide a great smiling face from a hero, but to do the pledge of allegiance. So I would ask that the pledge of allegiance this evening be in honor of Arnie Switchenberg, Pearl Harbor survivor. Mr. Yavino will be leading the pledge.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yeah, here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen. Here. Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Yavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, council, that leads us to the first workshop item, which is a review of the and consideration of recommended steps presented by staff as an effort to clarify the equitable distribution of credits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The board, after our adoption of the stormwater fees, asked staff to go back and look at how the businesses and they were being affected and annexed properties were being affected by the rate increase and how credits were being established. And so staff has been working diligently to try to gather this information. So we put this workshop on more or less to get direction from you all, how you want us to proceed, because in the memo that we provided to you and the background that Lisa has put together and her staff, this ordinance has been modified. It's been, there's been programs put in place for credits. And in reviewing them, we really don't have a good feeling of how some of those credits were being administered. Were they being administered fairly, equitably, equally, based on what? And so some of that backup information, we just, we're not saying it doesn't exist. We just haven't been able to locate that. So we'll have one person gets a 61% credit, another person gets 45% credit. Why? We don't know. We are giving these annexed properties a higher credit, which I think is probably justified. So there's a few things we want staff to get clarification on, how we should move forward. And obviously, we want to look at how we're doing the credits. We only have 50 businesses that apply and have credits. Maybe they're not aware of all those credits and the ability to get those. Maybe there's some opportunity to add some additional credits for things that they may be able to do on their property. We'd like to take a look at that as well. We'd like to get the criteria set up for the guidelines to make the credits equitable so we can justify the credits, because if we give you 45 and you 61, and your businesses are somewhat equal, how was that administered? So we want to look at that. The evaluation criteria, when the properties were assessed for impervious area, hasn't been done in years. So we could go to the property appraisers and look at some of those costs in impervious areas, but I think with this, what we're proposing with a stormwater budget to put that other inspector on, we can incrementally divide those businesses up and look at those businesses, make sure that they're getting charged for the ERUs that they should be charged for, they're not getting overcharged or undercharged. I think we need to validate the whole program. We need to amend the ordinance and put the rates and also the credits in there as a resolution instead of just a staff decision methodology through the resolution, and you all would adopt the resolution with the calculations for those rate adjustments. I think that's kind of the direction staff would like to go, and we would like to get the council's opinion and thoughts and ideas on that after this discussion.
Thank you. Well, I'll go ahead and get started, council. I think we, Mr. Dodd, you brought this up as something that we should talk about after, you know, we raised concerns that the business community was going to bear a large brunt of the increase in the stormwater utility fee. Now, the concern that I have is that most of the businesses are required to treat their stormwater or maintain most of the stormwater on site. Is that the case?
Any, most of the newer businesses do and have been doing, and some of the older businesses haven't. And so one of the things that staff and I've talked about is what opportunities can we give those other businesses to be able to come? There's not much they can do, so maybe there is some minor things they can do to treat some of their stormwater and get some additional credits for them as well, because those older businesses, most of those were homes at one time, and got converted into businesses and then pavements and parking lots were put in after the fact. And no, at the time, there wasn't a lot of thought to water quality. And so there may be opportunities there through education and through some work with staff and our engineering staff and our drainage staff. We can give them opportunities for additional credits as well. But I think it's, we need to take a holistic view of this stormwater and see where we're at and why, how we're administering it so that we're making it fair and we can defend it.
Yeah, and that's, I think where I'm coming from 100% on that. If you have a parking lot that's dumping 100% of its stormwater into a ditch that the city maintains, and then it's directly going into the lagoon versus a parking lot that dumps into a stormwater lake, which then dumps into another stormwater lake, which is treating the water, and making sure that those who are treating that water aren't paying the same as those who are not. And so that's the biggest concern that I would have, especially when you're talking about doubling the utility. So that's significant when you talk about the utility being based on impervious surface, when we require that the businesses have a certain amount of parking spaces, which is us telling them, you have to pave a certain amount of your property, and then we're going to bill you based on the amount of pavement that you have. So my concern, and I believe that you're, excuse me, that staff is moving in the right direction on this, is to make sure that those businesses that are required to and are treating their stormwater get a higher credit than those that aren't. That's my big concern, and it seems like that's the direction that staff is moving in.
That's correct. And incentivize them to do more. And so we'll look at ways, if you do just the minimum, then we can put, maybe we put a process in. So if a new business is going to come in and they get, they do just the minimum in the water management district, they get one credit. But if they go a step further and want to treat more water and get a bigger credit, it would be a bigger payoff over time. So these are the things that staff is looking at doing, not just to keep things at the minimum, but try to do things better if we can.
Okay, Mr. Dodd?
I'd say two things that we need to do to the ordinance. The first thing is this whole section, I think in the summary letter did a good job of laying out Section 1.02, or 102 and 103, the five classifications. I think we need to rethink some of those numbers that are in there. And then, of course, the, where the credits are given. We need to definitely give credits to people who treat their own stormwater, but if I look at the list that's included with this, there's people on here, there's a garage on here, for example, it's got a 25% credit. It's 100% parking lot that dumps water into a street, that dumps water into the swale. They really don't deserve a credit of any kind. And since this whole, the credit process is an annual reapplication according to the ordinance, then I would see that we should do this, is we rethink the part of the process that's in the front, that sets up the rules, and then on the annual recertification, then we reapply it to every piece of property. And whatever it comes out that they get, they get. There will be some people here who are getting some really hefty credits that aren't going to be happy, because they may not get those kind of credits. That's one of the questions I had about undeveloped residential is, does that mean that that's a plot, that's a undeveloped residential lot within a subdivision? And if that's the case, then we've got some subdivisions here getting 90% credit, because they, on Yearling Trail, for example, because they do have treatments in there, but the undevelopment lot in there, I don't know. I mean, it's a matter of actually making sure we write the rules correctly. I think we basically have established within this ordinance that all the property in the city, with the exception of two things, I think, one of them's streets and playgrounds, city playgrounds or something like that, are, they pay the utility. And there's five different classifications here for developed residential property, undeveloped single-family residential property, undeveloped partials. Now, it seems to me that undeveloped partials may need to be separated between those partials that are primarily designated as being commercial, like the piece of property we just annexed, that we designated that as a commercial zoning, and those that are primarily designated to be residential. And maybe we want to not apply the same set of rules for credits to the primarily residential undeveloped property versus the primary commercial. And then the definition of exempt property is somewhat confusing, because it introduces a new term. Service charges may be applied. Well, that's really, and in reality, the only thing that we've got, there's a definition of terms in here that defines exempt that's pretty straightforward, what is in that. But I do think we might want to think about separating undeveloped partials between undeveloped partials that are primarily designated as commercial and those that are primarily designated as residential. Because if it's a residential zoning classification and it's not platted yet, and we take the impervious structure, how do we define that? I mean, because the way this thing works is you take the, you divide it by the square feet for undeveloped partials of 11,154, which is slightly over a quarter of an acre, which is the standard size slot in Sebastian Highlands. And then you multiply that by .067. That might be appropriate if it's a residential, a piece of property that's going to have a residential development, but it's certainly not, it's certainly way too high for a piece of property like the one we just annexed, because that's going to come out with a relatively hefty. Now, there has been a reference in here that that .67 is the cost to cover administration, maintenance, and surrounding infrastructure. And I'm, one of my questions is, is that, what's the difference between the administration and the surrounding infrastructure? Because if the administration cost is .28, let's say, then certainly no one should pay less than .28, because that's the cost of administering a program. And I think maybe we need to try to determine that. And no matter what we do from a credit point of view or an application point of view, everybody should pay at least that amount, even if they're not dumping stormwater, currently dumping water into our stormwater system. I think they should pay for the cost to administer the program by the city, because they're part of the administration. Everybody is. So I would kind of like to see us talk about whether we can separate the undeveloped partials into either zoned residential or not, or maybe there's some other way to do that. But some way to make sure we give relief to people, especially those people who are coming to us now and asking us to annex commercial property, because it's to our advantage to do that. And I want to make sure that we're giving them adequate relief. And under this rule, the way it's structured, they're going to pay .67 of the average house-size lot in ERUs on, take 180-acre piece of land, that's a pretty hefty stormwater fee, especially if it's not developed and not doing anything. So.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Is it okay? So, and that even gets a little, another step into that. So you have these parcels that may come into the city that are never going to dump water into our system. They're paying to dump water into the Indian River Water Control District system. So that's where we look at that even higher rate of just a minor administrative fee, because we would look at it that way and present that to council, because we're not going to treat any of their water. They're going to have their own water treatment for their facility, and what water does leave their site isn't coming into our system. So that's another level that we have to make sure that we address.
Yes, and I, that's probably, maybe that's a sixth category that we have to put in here to define that some way. The problem with using a credit for that is the application of credits, unless you've got a 40-page checklist you go through, the application of, the process of deciding the credit level, as you can see by looking at the spreadsheet for this year, it would be very difficult without an extremely complex checkoff to determine, to equitably enforce that. It might be better to define that category within, as a sixth category that we apply to.
So we would just, we would categorize that, and we're saying a larger credit. It would be, they would only pay an administrative fee. So that's, that's how we would address that. It would just be, in my, I mean, we're still going to vet this out. We're a little bit taken back when we started digging into it as to how this was being administered and not blaming anybody. They had the tools they had to do, deal with, and I'm glad we're taking an opportunity to look at this overall system, and I appreciate you all bringing it to us and giving us an opportunity to do that. And I think, I think given some time, we can get this worked out.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like staff is really moving in that direction that we're talking about. And I think that legitimately bringing this up, especially at a time when we're increasing the stormwater fees so much, I think fairness and equity is what's important, and I think that staff gets that. Anyone else from council have any comments or concerns?
Under the basis for credits, I think we need to define what our costs are to maintain the stormwater systems, because we're requiring the people on their own systems to do the same thing as far as maintenance and maintaining and mowing. And if we don't have the same equitable costs, then there should be an allowance for that as well.
Right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. It sounds like you may have gotten what you're looking for this evening.
I appreciate that.
Some direction?
And we will, we'll work diligently on trying to bring something back to you as soon as we possibly can. I don't have a date for you at this point. We've got to do a lot of digging, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a cutoff date for the tax collector on this, though, what, September 1st or something like that?
Yes, and we were going to do everything we can to try to get something back to you before then, but it's going to take two readings of an ordinance change and that, so I'm not 100% confident we'll make it.
It's maybe a 19 issue.
We're going to do the best we can.
Maybe year two, probably.
Maybe a 2019 issue.
Yeah, okay.
Only because we don't want to rush it through and have something hang up with some other section of some other ordinance, because they tie together in different links. And so we just don't want to go back, come back to you and go, oh, wait a minute, we got to redo it again. Not that that won't happen, but we want to try to do the best job we can out the gate.
Mr. Carlisle, if I was looking at this, right, is the original, this was originally 2001, was there any revision to this, or, no, this was, the stormwater was written up 2001?
Yes.
And there hasn't been a revision since? As far as the, what we're talking about?
The main ordinance, no. There was a couple changes with the, with the credit process, program, but it didn't change in the ordinance.
Okay.
And then obviously, the only other change was the resolution for the rate change.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, hearing none, I will adjourn the workshop and call the regular city council meeting to order. Before we get into the moment of silence, unfortunately, I have another, I guess, story of bad news. Lee Sanmonier Robinson, previous city council member, passed away a couple of weeks ago. Lee San moved to Sebastian in 1999 and purchased the old town hall on US-1. She opened the hall and called it the Old Opera House, now called the Beyond Useless Boutique, which features the work of many artists and craftsmen, including her own copper designs. She had the vision to develop the city's riverfront into a quaint, small-town area where people could enjoy creative shops, tasty dining options, and overnight lodging, all within steps of each other. And I think that if you look at Sebastian since 1999 to today, we've moved very, very much in that direction. She had a vision to provide for safety within the riverfront district and was instrumental in helping to get the speed limit slowed down on US-1. Now, many of you may like that and many of you may not, but it certainly made the US-1 corridor safer. To share her passions for the arts, she founded the Sebastian River Fine Art and Music Festival in 2000. This annual premier event promotes interest in the arts and cultural enhancement for countless residents and visitors. To encourage young artists and festival provider, the festival provides scholarships and grants to children within the school system. Now, folks, the Fine Arts and Music Festival was one of the first big festivals we had here in Sebastian. We've had the Fourth of July, the Pelican Island Wildlife Festival, and then I believe the next one was the Fine Art Music Festival. And Lee San was the founder of that, and it's one of our great events. It's one that we love to attend every year. And for that, we owe her a great debt of gratitude. Her inspiration and desire to enhance our community has truly been a blessing for the city of Sebastian. Lee San Robinson will truly be missed, and I would ask that we stand for a moment of silence in honor of Lee San Robinson. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Yavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any agenda modifications this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. I first have a proclamation for Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup, which is July 23rd through July 29th, 2018. Whereas on Saturday, July 28th, 2018, the Marine Industries Association of the Treasure Coast, in conjunction with the Florida Inland Navigation District, will conduct their 11th Annual Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup. And whereas this event will attract over 950 volunteers who will participate in the cleanup, to clean up the waterways of Indian River Martin and St. Lucie Counties, whereas 25 designated sites throughout the three counties will serve as registration and disposal sites for the volunteers to work out of. And whereas in 2017, over 7.6 tons of trash was collected from approximately 125 miles of waterway. I believe that's in one day, with the exception of, with the expectation of a significantly larger amount to be collected this year with an increased volunteer effort. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the city of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim July 23rd through the 29th, 2018, as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week, and encourage all citizens and businesses to participate in activities which will assist in the elimination and of the accumulation of harmful debris in our waterways through the best, through the best practices of disposal. I would encourage everyone to attend this event. It's very important, this takes place once a year. And Ms. Williams, do you have some information on where they can go in Sebastian to help?
It is Saturday, and the meeting spot is at the Main Street Boat Ramp, and go down there at 8 o'clock, 8 to 12:30.
All right, thank you very much. 7.6 tons picked up last year, so I can only imagine there will be considerably more this year. Also, I have a couple of certificates of completion for our, a couple of city council members. The Advanced EMO is designed to further and teach elected officials group discussion, decision-making, media situations, trends, and issues with the municipal tax, personnel, and labor issues, and many other issues. And we had two council members who went ahead and took the Advanced EMO, and I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Good job.
And Vice Mayor Lynda Kitchen.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm sure you guys enjoyed that very much. It's, those, I would suggest, the EMO, the Advanced EMO are probably the best ways to get education to the city council members and local officials, the knowledge you get, and then the ability to meet with other city officials, I think, is priceless. So thank you, guys, very much for attending that. That will lead us up to brief announcements. The first announcement I will make is just to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all the staff at the city of Sebastian who participated in the Fourth of July celebration that we had last Wednesday. It was a fantastic event, from the morning parade through the festivities in the park up until the truncated fireworks display. I've never seen that many fireworks blown off in that short a period of time.
Four minutes, 32 seconds.
That was fantastic, but it was timed perfectly, because as soon as the last firework exploded, the rain started coming, so. But from the morning until the evening, the public works staff did an amazing job, as they always do, in keeping the park spotless. The police department did a great job of keeping everyone safe. Administrative staff did a really fantastic job of putting together the parade and working the parade. It went off without a problem. So here, here, congratulations, and thank you so much for a job well done. And on to the other announcements. July 21st will be the Christmas in July benefit. Shop with a Cop at Riverview Park from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That'll be a fun event. There'll be a lot of vendors there. You can go down and help support the Shop with a Cop program. August 10th, the Chamber Grill Out Night. Various business locations will have that. You can get a map at the Chamber of Commerce, and that will be from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Another amazing event put out by the Chamber of Commerce. It's sort of the mirror of the light-up night that we have here in Sebastian. So it's really a fun event to get out and support your local businesses. Counsel, that leads us to item 11, Consent Agenda.
Move approval of item A through E.
Second. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we have some committee reports and appointments. Does council have anything to report this evening? All right, hearing none, we have to appoint someone to the Citizen Budget Review Advisory Board. We have one applicant to that. I do happen to have a question on this. Does anyone have a suggestion on this applicant?
Oh. Um.
I will get to it as soon as I. God bless you. All right, our applicant today is Keriti Wraganda, Wragada.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. He's out of town.
He's out of town.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I suggest to you, if you read his resume, it was outstanding. Ivy League, overseas, we've got a postgraduate from Cambridge University, so there's certainly some solid education there. The question I had, however, for this was, we are filling the alternate member spot when there's an at-large member position available. Is there a reason that we're doing it that way?
The reason I chose is because this budget cycle's almost done, and this would give him three years to go into the next budget cycles. I don't know, I'd have to ask the city attorney if I have to fill the at-large at first, because the at-larges are one-year terms.
Okay, I see.
So the, the alternate members are three-year terms.
Yeah, the alternate member only, is only a voting member when one of the other members is not available to vote. So I don't know what makes more sense.
There would be no requirement that you have to fill the at-large first, but if the at-large is vacant, the alternate's going to be sitting there.
They're going to be the voter anyway.
Every time.
So it's essentially a three-year at-large.
Yeah.
Unless we fill that at-large.
Exactly.
Next year, and then that would make it so.
Yeah, the at-large term ends November of 18, though, so.
Right.
He's not going to be on there very long if you do that.
Okay. Well, counsel, I would make a motion that we appoint, again, that's a very difficult name, but.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second.
What are you doing?
Keriti Wraga.
Wragada.
Wragada, wonderful. All right, so he's appointed, and we appreciate his service. Next, we have the Construction Board.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Mayor, I have one applicant, Richard Wilcher, and I need to disclose that he does not currently have a license. But I ask your indulgence to change the code, because I've had vacancies for many years. I have other retirees on the board. They are licensed right now, but might not be in the future.
Okay, well, we have, we have on the agenda under item 16C, discussion on the change in the code, so I'll go ahead and make a recommendation to appoint Richard Wilker contingent upon the changing of the code.
Second.
Yeah.
Sound good? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There are no public hearings this evening. There's no unfinished business. Now is the time for public input. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to bring something to this council that is no, or that is not already on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Andrea Ring, 407 Querry Lane. I'm on the Budget Committee. I was also on the Natural Resource Board, and when he was on the Natural Resource Board for a whole year, he did not show up. And I had trouble sometimes getting going.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I know it's on the budget.
Yep, we've already dealt with that.
We already discussed it. But I would then be very glad to volunteer to be the position if you need one.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
My name's Robert Brunner, and I live on the 800 block of Montrose. And the drainage ditch behind my residence, behind my property, is eroding really bad. I came to the city building a couple of times, and I've talked to a few people over there. Phil came out and looked at it, and he said that he was under the impression that there may have been a grant available to put a culvert in there. And I was just coming to see where we stood with that. And I was just coming to see where we stood with that and express my concerns about the erosion. It's not only with my property, it's... And I'm sure, you know, living in the city of Sebastian, you're all aware of this problem, but is there anything on the books to do anything about it?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We've got a lot of different plans for the drain system here in Sebastian. To be specific to your situation, I would suggest that you contact the city manager. He'll be willing to discuss with you specific sites as to when we're gonna be doing things, whether or not it's a project that we're doing. And he will send his staff out there to take a look to make sure it's not a safety issue or something we need to get right on. But Mr. Paul Carlisle is our city manager, and I would recommend speaking with him.
Thank you.
And he'll point you in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you talking.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Head me in the right direction.
Got it. Anyone else wish to bring something forward this evening? Yes, sir.
My name is John Norris. I live at 566 Cross Creek Circle. I know it's appropriate here at this point, but if we could suggest any support for the Indian River Council meeting coming up next week about the biohazards feeding into the Blue Cypress Lake, I think would be significant. Because if they do open up that C-54 dam, which they haven't done in a while, it's gonna pour right into the Sebastian River next to our town.
Absolutely. So you can go ahead and give the time and date and location of that meeting if you'd like.
I think it's the 20th, next Tuesday
Okay.
at the Indian River County Facility.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
Good evening. My name's Roger Burt, and I currently reside at 13155 North Indian River Drive, and the current owner of Woody's Barbecue located in Sebastian, Florida. I don't know if this is appropriate at this point in time based on the agenda.
Yeah, actually, what we'll do is when we have discussion on the Golf Course Restaurant, which is an agendized item, we would ask under public input that you come up at that time.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak this evening on something other than what is on the agenda? Hearing none, we shall move on. We'll now move on to Item 16, 16A. We're gonna set the proposed millage rate for fiscal year 1819. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Chairman, we've put together this budget package for you all. We've made a few changes to the budget package to try to separate the stormwater out so it looks a little more transparent or a lot more transparent. And we have the budget currently funded, based on the information we have today, at a rollback rate. We do need to set a trim rate to send to the property appraiser to send out for the tax notice. And once you set that rate, as you all know, and for the public certification, you cannot raise it. So we asked the board to set the rate at the rate that we currently have our budget set today. And then as we go through our budget workshops, we could set the rate at whatever you deem appropriate as long as it's lower than the 3.4 that you put on the trim. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kilgore. He's gotta answer any questions first, if you would like, and then we can turn it over to Mr. Kilgore.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff at this time? All right, we'll go with the presentation.
Thank you. So as you know, our process is regulated by the state. There's a statute that governs the calendar of events that have to happen. And this is explained as the point where we have to adopt a proposed millage. This year, the taxable values actually increased 9.34% for the city. A large part of that, 7.95%, was increased in assessed values. Now, you understand and recall that homestead properties are capped by the Sabreholmes legislation at 3% or no more than 3%. Other properties are at 10%. So even though some of those... The average is probably more than the 7.95%, you'd have some people that could be hit by the total of 10%. So we are, we decalculated the rollback rate at 3.1514. We're still working on the budget. We've still got negotiations and to settle on the health insurance premiums. We need to keep in mind that next year we'll have the... Or actually, in November, we'll have the referendum to adopt an additional homestead exemption. Best guess we can give at this point is that'll probably reduce our taxable values in the year 2020 at 200, or by $200,000. We had thought initially it would be a higher amount, but we would look back at some of the information we did have and have revised that to the 200. Our lessons from hurricanes tell us that reimbursements can take forever. It was a year and a half before we got the first money on Matthew. We're still working on Irma. We're thinking, and I think the Budget Committee discussed this a bit, and we all agree that if we can increase our reserves, that would be a good thing to do. Reservation is that no one wants to increase taxes in order to do that. But as we incrementally can build that up through savings in the budget, we would hope we could do that. And staff is always cognizant of, you know, everybody prefers to go with the rollback rate. So we always try to develop our budget preparation with that goal in mind. I developed a chart just to kind of document or be able to see in a picture what the effect on a 3% capped homestead property is as compared to all the other taxpayers. So I compared last year, 2018, at the 3.4 millage to what we would be with the rollback rate this coming year. Homestead properties obviously have some advantage. Not huge, but the higher value of the property. I've shown you $200,000 valuations versus 250 versus 300 for both the homestead properties and other accounts. So, of course, homestead properties benefit higher the... Higher the value of the property, they get more dollars of a benefit. With the other properties, there's some... Minor increase if you think of these numbers as being an annual amount of increase, like $13 on a $200,000, say, commercial property. As city manager indicated, the draft working with now, we are aiming for the rollback rate. But we still, as we do, as we have in the past, ask you to adopt a proposed millage of 3.4. Things can happen, surprises could occur where we could be... We could basically have a problem if we had some critical need to increase the millage above the rollback rate. You would have to notify all the taxpayers by first-class mail, and it would probably delay the process. So it's not somewhere we like to go. We always like to be in a position to be able to grade it, to lower it at the time we adopt the final millage. The Budget Committee did review our document that shows what our draft budget was compiled at. It's on the website. They went through it quite extensively. I gave them a presentation on it. Counsel will get something similar to that on August 8. That's when we're scheduled for a full review of the budget. But essentially, the Budget Committee agreed with staff's recommendations. They did compose a letter at our meeting a week ago Monday. Or they directed the chairperson to compose a letter. They basically stated that they kind of liked what they saw in the budget, in the draft budget, that they agree with building up the reserves on an incremental basis. And they also liked the formatting changes. And particularly the stormwater fund this year, we are really making an effort to match those stormwater revenues to all the cost of the program. This last Monday, they met again, and they decided to amend the original letter with a comment that they do endorse our idea of setting the millage at 3.4. So just to sum it up, the draft budget is funded at the 3.1514, but we still recommend the 3.4.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Do you have any questions at this time?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with the 3.4, but I'm telling you, looking through the budget, I quite frankly, it would be very, very hard for me to vote for anything other than 31514. So whether we say 3.4 tonight, if we don't on August the 8th or whenever it is, if we don't get 31514, I'm probably not gonna vote for it. There's no reason in the budget process that I'm seeing that we have to spend more money than that. And I would be, I've watched the Budget Review Committee and their conversations about the increase in the reserves. I'm torn between, you know, what is, there's a song about torn between two lovers or something like that, right? Well, I'm torn here on this because I understand the need to get larger reserves, but I would hate to see us like we did with the R&amp;R Fund many years ago, where the R&amp;R Fund was established, and all of a sudden, all this extra money kept flowing into it, and Counsel didn't realize until it was too late that there was a gigantic pot of money there. I would hate for us to establish a process by which maybe things aren't getting done, and money's going into adding money to the reserves, and the Counsel doesn't realize that. So I would not wanna approve anything that authorizes transferring overages to the reserves without that being as a result of a request to the Counsel to do that. I mean, if we're gonna, if we have an extra $45,000 in this budget, I want to spend that on stormwater. I don't want to spend that on reserve building, quite frankly. There'll be a point in time in the future where I might not have that thing, but right now, we've got so many stormwater problems that I would be reluctant to do that. So as far as, I don't see any need for us to approve the reserve limit to $6 million right now. I see an opportunity for you guys to come back to us at some point in time next year and say, this money is not being used for this purpose, and we don't want to use it for something else. Let's put it in reserves, and then we can talk about that. But I wouldn't wanna make it an approval that the $6 billion becomes the mark for reserves right now. I wouldn't wanna do that. But I'm willing to do the 3.4, but I just don't see any reason why it's not gonna be 3.1514. And if not saying that tonight, it's not gonna change that, I don't think. So that's my comment.
All right, thank you. I would agree 100% with what you're saying. I'm very pleased with staff and the direction they're going.
Yes.
I'm ecstatic with the way staff is handling this new budget and the way they're dealing with the Budget Review Committee. I like most of the comments I'm hearing from the Budget Review Committee. I'm super comfortable with this. I'm super comfortable that we're gonna be able to hit rollback rate. And so with that being said, I have no problems with hedging at this time because I'm super confident, again, that we'll be able to get to rollback rate. And so with that being said, I am willing to make a motion that we set the proposed millage rate at 3.4, which would represent a tax increase of 7.89% with the idea that we will attempt to get to rollback rate before the end of this budget.
Second.
All right. Anyone else from Counsel have questions of staff or comments at this time?
I just wanna comment on the police department and the job that they did with their proposed budget thus far, and filling the SRO positions out of nowhere. We needed another two people, and actually not having much of an increase, if not anything, in your budget. So thank you, guys, for what you do.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna see over the next couple of budget years that our new city manager is beginning to throw the accountability and the planning cycle into the budget cycle, which is something we've needed for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And I think, I think as he gets through a couple of our budget cycles, we're gonna find more than just stormwater being traced through the budget as it really should be. And I'm, my kudos for that. It's a good thing. It's a good management thing that we need to do.
All right, thank you, Ken. Thank you very much for that. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this this evening? All right, hearing none. Any more comments from the City Council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That leads us to new business, Item B, discussion on the Sebastian Golf Course Restaurant lease.
Mr. Mayor, Member of Counsel, as you may be aware, we have terminated the lease with the former proprietor at the Golf Course Restaurant. We did a mutual termination. So we agreed to move on in different directions. Counsel asked us to bring it back to you all for direction to either... If you look at the transmittal, there's a few options. We can go back out to bid, put a quick turnaround on the bid to go out to bid, which is probably the most prudent. But there's options to, as we're doing now, we're kind of running a semi-snack shop out of there now with drinks and water and sodas, and that's doing okay. We're running into a few little obstacles with putting food out there without having the kitchen open. Randy's been working diligently on that and trying to get the liquor license and things of that nature. So there is an opportunity that staff could run that. Even though I have that as a recommendation, there's challenges that come with that and getting food managers and, you know, with the union contracts that we have and wages and benefits. I'm not sure that it would be a profitable center to pay back the debt, which is, the debt is something that this Counsel and the Budget Advisory Board has all asked us to try to work out a way to do that. And the current budget does have some funds going to pay off that debt. And by leasing this restaurant back out to a proprietor as a straight lease, it would allow those funds to come and recoup those fees that the city had paid into renovating that restaurant site and the golf course building itself. So with that, and then there's other options that the board may deem appropriate. You may have other thoughts or ideas that you may want to consider. I know, Councilmember Dodd, you brought something up at the last meeting, but I will leave it up to the Counsel to give us direction on which way you would like to see that go.
All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more thing?
Go ahead.
I do know we've had several other individuals inquire. One of the persons that had bid on it is interested. And then we had another proprietor that went out there and looked at it just recently that is also interested. So I wanted to make sure you have that information so that you are aware when you start deliberating. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption.
That's quite right. I will just start by saying that, first of all, I believe that this was, and I think it's come to fruition, that this was kind of a botched deal. And there's reasons, several reasons why it was botched. First of all, we had grandeur that we had a restaurant out at the golf course that was a full-service restaurant, that someone could come in there and make buku dollars, and they've already got customers, and they don't have to necessarily cater to the golf. But, you know, they're gonna get the, they have to stay open a certain amount of hours. And so we kind of put together a management plan for... And worked it out with the person who signed the lease. And in that management plan, there's just no way that could work. And I think that when you have something that bad, that we need to start over and make it right. And so in order to start over and make it right, we need to go in with a whole fresh... I guess RFP. A whole fresh idea of this is what we have here at the golf course, and this is what we expect at the golf course. We expect it to be a golf snack bar where if a golfer goes in and wants to tabulate their score and have a glass of water, you're not gonna kick them out because they're not buying food. That needs to be part of the deal because that's, the number-one customer we have at that building is the golf course, are the golfers. So we need to make sure that the golfers are provided for. When you have golf leagues that golf out there in the evenings and want to go in and tabulate their scores, and they're not welcome with open arms, then that's a big problem. We've got golf leagues going to restaurants throughout the city to do these things. And so we need to start fresh on this and say, look, these are the expectations that we have at this facility. The number-one goal at this facility, first of all, is to pay back the debt. But secondly, to serve the customers at the golf course because that's what it is, a golf course snack bar. Now, I think that the, quite frankly, the only option that we have here, staffing it with city employees would be terrible. To say that we're gonna run a restaurant and compete with other businesses in this community would be a big mistake from that standpoint. Plus, we don't want to see city employees run a restaurant. Or I don't, anyway. So I think that's a bad idea. And then if we took it all the way down to just the snack shack, then we would never pay our debt back. We would be short-sighting ourselves on that. So I think the only thing that we can do is start this process over. I believe that Greg can, throughout the next couple of months while we go forward with this process, provide for the golfer their needs with beverages and sandwiches and the like. Uh, I do have a concern over alcoholic beverages, beer. Are we able to, to serve or sell beer? If, if not, then the, we, we certainly don't allow for people to bring beer in, and, and beer is a big summer thing on golf courses. I don't know if you're all golfers, but that's something that people like to do on a golf course is drink beer. So those are things that we would need to get ironed out whether or not, and I believe Greg has the knowledge and the ability to, 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 to get us to a point where by the time we get to October, or, or whenever it may be, we have someone ready to move in there that's, that, that, that can provide for the customer, that can help us to pay down the debt and that, that can actually succeed in that building. And so those are the three goals I would have, is that we get someone in there, uh, that can help pay down the debt, that can provide for our customer and be successful. And I think that what we, what we had in the past wouldn't allow for that. So I think we need to start fresh and, 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 and ask for a new RFP. And I would suggest also that anyone who's submitted, uh, in the past, that we would just accept those, uh, as their proposals. So that's, that's where I stand, council. Uh, any other thoughts? I'm sure we have plenty.
I, I'm a little leery starting off with, uh, having anybody that submitted an application in the past resubmit because we didn't work out a deal with them to begin with. Now we want them to resubmit. But I, I'm completely on board with revamping the whole process, uh, maybe lifting some of the restrictions that we had on the previous leasing and bringing in fresh people and putting it out to bid and maybe giving some new people a chance to rebid on it versus say, "Well, you did before. Why don't you come back and do it again?" With the idea that if we only get one bid, then we'll be, it'll force our hand to revisit other people that have bid, but maybe just starting fresh all the way around. And I, I wasn't involved in this process initially in the beginning and now I am. So if we're gonna do it, let's do it the right way, make it fair and equitable and, and put it out to bid and see what happens. And, and I agree with you as far as the, the snack shack goes. I mean, we don't wanna completely lose money with it. So why shut it down completely until it comes back to bid or till it gets rebid? But at the same time, you know, pay back some of the loan, work towards paying back some of the loan till we get to where, what we all agree on is to wear a date or time that we're gonna say, "Hey, we want it to be put back out to bid and we want it to be up and running by, you know, October first or whatever the case may be."
I think completely going out to bid is gonna be a long process and we may not have anybody in there by October.
Well, if, if we have someone in there by Thanksgiving, then, then we're, we're rolling along in the right place. That's when we really start cranking up this, the...
Mr. Carlisle, didn't you say that you had at least one new person right now that was a proprietor that was expressing interest in it?
We do, but if I may answer one comment you made, it will be a whole new bid because it will be, the, the parameters of that bid will be completely different than the original bid. So having those that bid on it in the past, bid on it again, would be a completely different proposal. It wouldn't be their same proposal because it would be, we're gonna write this completely different. As the mayor said, there were conditions in that original bid that, um, really didn't need to be in there. And I talked to the, the city attorney about it and he agrees that requiring someone to provide their financial statements when we don't get any stake in that, why do we need that? I mean, we don't need your financial statements, you know, if you're not paying as a percentage of your profit. So there's a lot of things in there. So we'll work on putting the proposal together and it would be a completely different bid. So the parameters of the bid would be a, a, a different, different bid proposal. And Vice Mayor, I think if we take in and, and put a thirty-day turnaround on this bid and we put an evaluation team together and we put a score sheet in the bid so the restaurateur knows what their, the documents they need to put in there to quantify their, their bid so that we can say, "Okay, you, this is worth twenty-five points. This is worth ten points." So everybody can look at the document and say, "This is what they submitted. This is how the ranking is." And then we can bring them into a, to an interview process based on the highest rank.
And, and certainly we don't, I mean, the last time we went through this process, we did a complete renovation of the entire facility. Uh, so that thing is ready to move into right now. So as soon as we get through the process, which I, I wouldn't anticipate taking, uh, ninety days, uh, maybe a hundred and twenty?
No, I, I don't know that ninety would be out of, out of the realm.
Right.
Because if we got it advertised in the next couple of weeks, thirty days puts us at the end of August. We'd bring it back to you probably the end of September. If, if, depending on the, if we don't get a lot of questions on the bid, you could award it at sometime in October, end of October. I think that's doable, if the, if the thirty days works. By statute, that's all we have to do is twenty-seven days from date of no, of notice in the paper.
Well, I, I would make a motion to, uh, direct the city manager to that effect.
Second.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Roger Burke. I currently reside at one three one five five North Indian River Drive. I'm currently a business owner on Woody's Barbecue here locally in Sebastian. Have been a resident here since nineteen seventy-eight, my lovely wife and I. Um, we have an interest in the restaurant at the golf course. Um, I think what we've done for the community since two thousand and one kind of speaks for itself. This particular restaurant would not have any affiliation at all with Woody's. It's a total separate entity. We have a facility up in Suntree that is a golf course restaurant called Divots. That you're more than, we welcome you to go up there and check it out. We look at your facility, um, and I, I think regardless of who you pick, there's gotta be financial support from the city of Sebastian in order to make that facility work. You have to have it. Sebastian Golf Course has gotten a bad name in the last six months to a year because the operator you had in there previously didn't know what the heck he was doing. We are attuned to the golf community in the state of Florida. We have two people that's in our corporation that are on the LPA, LPGA tour, and they're, they're touring pros. And they bring people, they attract people, they teach people. Um, anyway, we would be more than happy to submit a proposal for your review.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, uh, ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
What, what prohibited you from bidding the first time?
I was too busy.
You was too busy? Okay. And when you talk about financial support from the city, can you give me some idea what that means?
Well, first of all, it's, this is a concession lease. Uh, as a result of that, this is your facility. This is your equipment. I'll maintain it, but I don't even know anybody in their right mind's gonna come in and put thirty-five, forty, fifty thousand dollars into equipment and without some type of basis, uh, to look at gross revenue over the past five, ten years, three years. And you don't have that, that information available. Um, as far as a lease is concerned, you know, anybody that goes in there on a set lease, they're out of their minds. Restaurant, it's a very, very tough business and it's a very time-consuming business.
I concur.
The only way to structure a lease properly, in my personal opinion, is a percentage rent deal with the tenant. The tenant makes money, the city makes money. You have season and non-season here in Sebastian. And it's becoming more and more obvious, you know, as we continue to grow. You know, that golf course is a benefit to the city of Sebastian and also the residents that live here in Sebastian. And in our personal opinion, it can be a great thing for everybody. It has to be operated properly. And I hate to say this, but we're the ones that can do that. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak at this time?
Good evening, council. My name's Greg Hepler, twelve ninety-one Barber Street, Sebastian, Florida. Um, the gentleman is somewhat correct in his assumption about someone going in there. Yes, there is a bad reputation. But, um, also, restaurant business and any business as far as leasing and people go, when you sign a lease or take on a business, it's an assumed risk. There's no guarantee. You can't guarantee that you're gonna get customers back. Some people might wanna say that it's sitting off of Main Street. It's out of direction. It's not on US one. No one's not gonna know it's there. Golf Course has had a reputation in the past of being a good place. It's a premium property, premium location. You guys have your airport, skydive Sebastian. Why does River View Park just have to be the crown jewel of the city? Why can't we have functions out of the golf course? Why can't we use the screen that they use for the driving range? Put a movie screen up and have movies on the golf course? Why can't we use the beautiful property that everyone's invested in and made a nice property? So with that being said, yes, some golfers have been offended, business has been tarnished. I do believe if you bring in someone who's a local, deals with locals, has an understanding of the business, knows how to keep customers, maintain a business, and has had professional experience at golf clubs such as Orchid Island, Windsor, Quail Valley, and other places, I think you have a chance. And I was one of the original bidders and I had no problem rolling up my sleeves and getting down in dirty when it wasn't the condition that it was in. And I quit, made it quite clear, "You're probably gonna be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for a new hood." I think it was fifteen thousand. "You're looking ten to fifteen thousand dollars for walk-in freezers." It was ten thousand dollars. I've been doing this my whole life and I see a hundred and ten percent potential over there. I would by all means have somewhere for golfers to come in with their spikes on irregardless. Air conditioning, sit down, do your scorecard. I'm in the business to make money. I don't have to sell this customer today to earn his business tomorrow. If I let him come in and sit down and adjust his scorecard, he's gonna go home and tell his friends and it's not gonna tell their friends. And guess what? Let's go try that restaurant out. They're nice enough to let me sit there, adjust my scorecard, and not buy anything. They're allowing me to come in with my cleats on and do what I'd like to do. And in the past, you can have all kinds of tournaments out there. You can set up men's day, mixed, ladies, doubles. You can give golf clubs preset menus, three choices. Pick one of these three. When you come off the ninth hole at twelve o'clock and you sit down at your table, here's your meal, here's your drink, set price. There's no reason why none of these things can be accomplished. So once again, I'm just asking for some consideration and I'd be more than willing to take on the project and I have no fear.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Norris again, five six six, Cross Creek Circle, uh, Sebastian. Um, well, I've probably dined all over the world, the military, every chow hall, mess hall, Ed Dodd at Lackland Air Force Base, uh, you name it. Uh, I've been there overseas, everywhere, all through the state of Florida, New York, California, you name that. Um, I wanna give a straight opinion here. Uh, I love Woody's also. Uh, but the Pelican Diner that Greg runs is probably the, the, the best diner in this county. Uh, the man is there virtually daily managing it. Uh, he's got the most reasonable prices in town. He gives coupons to bring a second person in with you to eat consistently, never backs off. Uh, he's straight up front, honest. Um, the food is great and fresh. Uh, I guess he's buddies with Chaney's, I don't know, but for a place to dine in Sebastian, um, and I'm not Greg's buddy or friend. I just moved here and this is a place that I enjoy the most in the county to eat. So I strongly suggest you look at his recommendation, what he can do for it.
Thank you.
Uh, plus the best place that, that we brought our, my West Point guys to eat was at the Eagles Nest Restaurant. We would sit there and then discuss our business and it was just a great place to dine and I, I think you really need to get it going again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember.
All right, we appreciate you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this issue? All right, hearing none. Council, any more questions of staff or comments?
Yeah, I, um, I, I, I was not at all uncomfortable with, uh, with asking the city manager to suspend the purchasing rules and go back to the original RFP. Um, and it primarily had to do with the fact that I, I think the other respondent to the original RFP has a, has a good reputation. He's done a good job, um, in, in the restaurant that he's in and I think he'll do a good job at the airport. I, I don't have any issue with redoing the RFP if, uh, if it's felt that it would be a fairer thing to do. Uh, I have no doubt that, that, um, the people who responded to the last RFP will do a good job of responding to that. I do have issue, uh, one of the biggest problems that I heard when, when we spent all these hours talking about this restaurant was this concept that the city was in partnership with the person who ran the restaurant. We're not in partnership with the person who runs a restaurant. If we're gonna have liability to run a restaurant, then let's run it. If we're gonna have liability to run a restaurant, let's don't hire a business to do it. Let's let that business have liability to do that. Governments are not, should not be in the business to guarantee profits to an independent businessman. It's that simple. Every time we've done that as a government, it's failed. There's all kinds of empty buildings all over parts of the Treasure Coast, especially in Port St. Lucie, that are, that are a testament to that. Pay a hundred and fifty million to build it and sell it for twelve, you know? Um, so if, if we write an RFP, it needs to say specifically in there that this is a monthly lease process period. You're gonna pay a monthly lease and that's it. And it, and I think we probably ought to define what that monthly lease is in the RFP. We don't need to be asking a respondent, "What will you pay?" We should say to a respondent, "If you wanna respond, this is how much you will pay. This is what we want for it." Uh, we know what we've gotta generate in revenue out of it. I mean, it's that simple. We know that. So why do we ask how much they wanna pay? So I don't have any issue with redoing the RFP if it's redone so that we, it, we don't become a partner with another person that six months from now we're trying to figure out how to get rid of, 'cause they're not making any money and they're not happy.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna be a partner with anybody. I wanna, I wanna know that whoever comes in there is coming in there with the expectation that they're gonna run a restaurant, they're gonna be successful, and it's their responsibility to be that way, and they're gonna pay their monthly rents. That's, that's, to me, that's the best way to go.
Mayor, can I, can I quantify a question for Mr. Dodd?
You go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry. Please.
I, I appreciate the set the rent, but I think what we do is we set a minimum because we have to have it be competitive.
Right.
Uh, otherwise we're just soliciting someone to come in.
Oh, I, I don't have any problem with that. If you set a minimum, then you've done what I'm talking about. You've established a, a benchmark. If you can't, if you can't come in willing to pay this dollar amount, then don't, don't respond. It's that simple. Don't respond.
If I just set the amount, then we're just looking at...
Yeah.
Do we like this person better than that person? So...
Yeah.
The competitive bid needs to be such, doesn't need to be, on a popularity basis, needs to be quantifiable and justifiable.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, that, that's just, I, I'm, I was looking, when I talked the, the last meeting about the suspension of the rules, I was primarily looking at, "Let's get this done as quickly as possible so we can get somebody in there when the, when the snowbirds come back and the golf rounds start to really pick up." But if, if it's felt that it would be fairer for us to do another RFP and we can do it within that ninety-day window, then I can support that as long as we're really structured in the RFP to the fact that we're not becoming a partner with someone. If we need to be a partner with someone, then let's be a partner with our golf team and run a restaurant. So...
Well, I, I agree a hundred percent. And I, I, I think that, uh, the, the reason I think we should go out to, to a new RFP is because I think that the, when we went into the last one, there were some, some different ideas about how things should've been ran out there. Um, and, and so I think if we go in there fresh and get something good and, and solid, then the, the bidders will have something actually different to bid on. It'll be a different process. Um, so I look forward to it and, and I look forward to, to, to seeing what's brought to us.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but, um, I mean, I think those items could be ironed out in a contract negotiation if we went back to the original bidders. Um, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't just waive the bidding procedure and go back to the original bidder and, and do it that way and iron out those things during contract negotiations.
Well, I, I would just say to you this, that being that we're going to be going out and asking for an RFP based on different things, I think that it's only fair to offer it to, uh, for, for a rebid. That's why I think it's the fair thing to do. It's the right thing to do. And then we're not sitting in there just trying to hash out, you know, "Well, can you give us this?" And then we'll give you this or slip this around. I think it's just, we look out with the trash and let's put something together that works for everyone.
Okay, well, I certainly don't agree with Mr. Burke's comments that we should rotate his rent based on summer and winter rates. We just denied Mr. Campbell the, that same thing, so...
I don't think you're alone up here with that feeling. Anyone else? All right, a roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, earlier today, Ms. Williams had mentioned that, uh, she wishes that we make some adjustments to the construction board, uh, membership requirements, uh, and that would lead to item C. Ms. Williams, will you be handling this?
Um, I just wanna let you know that I, I have been in contact with Wayne Esseltine, the building official, and he supports everything I'm doing here.
Okay. And then I would just simply ask, uh, Mr. Stokes, if that, uh, would, would pass legal muster? Uh, with, with everything we've had done in the past, would we be able to go ahead and do this?
Yes, and actually I, I drafted the language here. I think we'd be on safe ground here by, um, when, when the issue was brought to me whether we could put him on the board, under the current language, that was a problem. And that's why I helped draft this, that would, um, which you would have the authority, legislative authority to change. Once it's changed, then it would, uh, would open up that board to, to people who are very experienced in the field, but maybe just not making... in the field, but maybe just not maintaining their license anymore because they're costly and if they're retired, or whatever. But we did make sure it was in here that it would have to be somebody who was out of the business, but in good standing, not somebody who had their license suspended or revoked.
Yeah, and that's awesome, that's great, and, you know, this is one of the boards that are difficult to fill because they're so specific in some of those positions. Council, this is first reading of ordinance number O-1809. What's your pleasure?
I'm of approval of ordinance O-1809.
Mr. Mayor, could I read the caption first, just for the record?
Please do.
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida pertaining to the construction board, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Building and Building Regulations, by providing for retired contractor participation by amending Section 26-191, Membership Terms, Filling of Vacancies, Providing for Codification, Providing for Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Conflicts and Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date.
And I will assume, Mr. Dodd, that your motion stands.
Yes.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on ordinance number O-1809? Hearing none, comments or questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Kinda like when the waitress walks up to you and you just stick some food in your mouth and ask you how things are, right?
I apologize. Madam Vice Mayor.
It's okay, Janelle.
All right, great, that leads us to...
Can I have your evaluation back, please?
Item D, awarding work authorization under the continuing services agreement with MVV Engineering. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, when I first got here, I took a tour with Tim Walker, our stormwater director, and we happened to go by the Stonecrop Drainage Project, and he goes, "Oh, you know, we've got a proposal in to pipe this, we're gonna put in for a grant for FEMA to pipe this." And I asked him, I said, "Why are we piping it?" Well, that's kinda what the engineer thought we should do, and I didn't think that was a good option. And the reason I didn't think it was a good option is, one, it creates higher velocities downstream. I wasn't 100% convinced of the design, and I'm not an engineer, but I wasn't 100% convinced that the design wasn't gonna create upstream problems. It wasn't gonna provide for any water quality, and it wasn't gonna, we were gonna lose our water storage capability. So, I went back to MVV, and me and Mr. Walker talked to them and got their price down to redesign that for a bank stabilization using some permanent stabilization, either cable block, or fiber form, or some type of stabilization that will allow the water to be able to be stored there in these high-storm events, rather than just funneling it downstream. I think the more that we can put in, we talk about swells and storage and capacity and putting in stormwater ponds, and then we go and pipe a stormwater conveyance. I think that goes against even the things that we think are best for the whole water quality, as we're talking about water going into our Indian River Lagoon. So, we'd ask the board to consider this, change to taking it from a pipe ditch into a bank stabilization project, and allow MVV to put those documents together so that we can get this to FEMA before the August 6 deadline.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have any questions of staff or wish to make a motion?
I'm of approval.
Second.
All right, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the work authorization to MVV Engineering? Hearing none, any questions of staff, council? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much. That will also present a substantial savings in the budget, if I'm not mistaken.
It should, and plus, we're going after a FEMA mitigation grant.
That leads us to 17 city attorney matters. Mr. Stokes.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Carlisle.
Just a couple of things. One, I really appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to ride in the Fourth of July Parade. It was a great parade, and the folks on the parade were very welcoming, and so I appreciate that. The Oyster Point, the Oyster training classes that are gonna be done at the working waterfront, the first class is actually gonna start Friday between 9:00 and 12:00, so we're getting students signed up, and gonna teach them about the ecosystem and the oysters, the oyster baskets are being done, and we're gonna teach them about the, what the oysters do to the water quality. So, it's gonna be a good kicking-off point to start that training. And there's an event starting this weekend to let the residents know, Skydive, Sebastian's gonna be holding an event this weekend, so you're gonna see a lot of extra parachuters, a lot of different aircraft, helicopters, and some different planes. So, you may get some complaints about noise, but go out there and check it out. I hear it's gonna be a great event, and a lot of skydivers, and they promised to keep it a little calmer this year than in the previous years, so, but we hope it's a great event, and just to let the residents know, they see helicopters, different planes flying around, that it's a weekend event. And that's all I have, if there's any questions from council.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Ms. Williams.
Nothing more tonight.
Yeah, that leads us to city council matters. The first item this evening is charter officer evaluations. Obviously, we don't have time to evaluate our city attorney and city manager positions. Of course, we're, on an ongoing basis, we speak to them relative to how they're doing, but Ms. Williams is up for evaluation. I had the opportunity to speak with her about how she's doing, think she's doing a great job, and I would make a motion to increase Ms. Williams' pay to the contractual obligation that we have with her, which, if I'm not mistaken, is whatever we agree with the bargaining units would pass on to Ms. Williams.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Ms. Williams?
I think she does a great job, too.
It's my turn.
Janelle, we appreciate, I appreciate all your help, especially being real new to this, and all the questions and stuff that I've been throwing away over the last couple of months, I appreciate it.
Okay.
She takes good care of us.
She does indeed, she does indeed, and the good thing is, we meet with her all the time, and so, we can provide those kudos and let her know when she's doing a terrible job, which I'm sure you've done on many occasions. I've never seen...
It's not that you two don't do a good job, but she takes care of us.
That's right.
I understand.
All right, Vice Mayor Kitchen. Oh, I'm sorry, let's take a roll call on that vote, on that motion.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Kitchen. Do you have anything for us this evening?
I just wanna thank the staff for Fourth of July as well. This is a new staff, and this was their first Fourth of July parade, so you did a great job, and looking for many more to come.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Dodd.
No, thank you.